Welcome to this public forum with the candidates for Bismarck School Board. I'm Vanessa Pfeiffer with the League of Women Voters and I will be your moderator. This candidate forum has been organized by the League of Women Voters of Bismarck Mandan and is co-sponsored by the Bismarck Tribune and Dakota Media Access. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that promotes the informed participation of all citizens in their government. The League does not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. There are six candidates running for three open seats in the Bismarck School Board. And six of them have all joined us here tonight. They are, from left to right, Ms. Harper, Mr. Hawley, Mr. Halverson, Ms. Williams, Mr. Sagsveen, and Mr. Lemke. Thank you for coming here tonight. The audience is invited to submit questions using the index cards provided to you in the interviewing audience. And those of you at home can call in questions at 355-1312. Between 6:00 and 7:00 p.m. tonight only, May 8th. That number again for tonight, May 8th, is 355-1312. This is intended to be a respectful exchange of ideas. Our purpose this evening is to provide voters with information about the candidates and their positions on issues that affect the people of Bismarck. Now, let's meet our candidates. You each have one minute to tell us why you are seeking election to the Bismarck School Board. Ms. Harper, you may begin.
Hi, my name is Carol Lee Harper and I have a kindergartner and a second grader that is attending the new Lincoln Elementary School. And I want to bring the voice of the elementary school kids and the younger generation into the school system.
Thank you. And Mr. Hawley?
Hi, my name is Mike Hawley. I'm running for the school board. I've spent most of my adult life in public service, recently retired from the National Guard, and spent several months now in a retired position and thought, you know, it's time that I find another way to support the community. I have a lot of experience with my two daughters in the Bismarck Public Schools. And I think I bring a lot of passion, a lot of experiences both in education and also in planning and strategic direction to this board.
Thank you. Mr. Halverson, why are you running for school board?
Hi, my name is Scott Halverson and I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this. And basically, four years have been very interesting on the school board. We've done a -- accomplished, I feel quite a bit, and a lot of challenges with redoing the boundaries, five different building projects, and rolling up our grades. We've taken on a lot of work and we've had a lot of great support from the community and also our staff and faculty and myself. I've spent 38, 39 years, I don't know, in education and I feel that the profession's been so good to me, I'd like to give something back. So that's why I'd like to continue on. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams?
Hi, my name is Rissa Williams and I'm running for school board because I think there's an underrepresented population on the board. The vast majority of people in Bismarck, only 33% of people in Bismarck have a bachelor's degree or higher. And the rest of us, our parents, working class, upper working class, whatever we are, we're the average person. And I'm the average person. This week, we're celebrating Teacher Appreciation Week, so thank you to the teachers. I'd like to thank the current school board for doing an outstanding job. And I really enjoy being involved in my community, being involved in the school system. And if the most important thing we can give our students is our time, I would like to serve on the board and give them as much of my time in as broad a scope as I can.
Thank you. Mr. Sagsveen?
Thank you, and I thank you, Mrs. Williams, for your generous compliments to the board. I know that Scott and I have had the pleasure of serving on the board for the last four years. And as Scott mentioned, we've worked hard to accommodate increased enrollment, the construction projects, the bond issue, legacy, Lincoln and Liberty, grade reorganization, and the boundaries. But we still have a lot of work to do. And that would include working on some of the older buildings in the district and working on some of the new standards that are coming down that we need to focus on and give some direction so that we can move forward and for some continuous improvement in our district. And it's especially satisfying to work on a board when I've got two kids in the district and another one coming. So I'm really pleased again to have served already and I'm looking forward to trying to serve another four years.
Thank you. Mr. Lemke?
All right. Well, I too want to thank the -- I too want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting us tonight. It's really exciting to be here and to be part of this process. You know, I grew up in Bismarck, my kids are growing up in Bismarck. And this community has provided so much for me. And I'm ready, I'm willing to serve and give back to this community. And representing students, educators, and all the rest of the citizens of the Bismarck School District is the most effective way that I can do that. As a parent of three kids, one in high school, one in middle school, and one in elementary school, I get to see what they learn, I get to see how they learn it, I get to see how that affects them, how that affects us. In my work and in my involvement in the community, I get to see how the school board decisions affect Bismarck and how that can help or maybe there's opportunities. I think all these experiences give me effective communication and common sense to make responsible decisions for Bismarck.
Thank you. Thank you. And now we'll go on to our questions set up for us by the League of Women Voters. Ms. Harper, you're first. Why are you a candidate for the school board?
I am a candidate because I believe in our kids and I believe in our educators and really taking a focus, not away from academics, but knowing that there is more to academics for our children. And so making sure that they are healthy, both mentally and physically, is very important to me.
Thank you. Mr. Hawley, why are you running for school board?
I'm running for the school board because I think there are things that -- I appreciate what the board has done. But I look at what I think a board, an effective school board, can do and how effective it can be. And I think I can bring three things to the board. And the first is dealing with strategic direction. I think the school board really needs to start looking for the future and towards the future. I also believe in providing administrative oversight and ensuring that the superintendent schools and the school administration are using the resources allocated or allocating the resources appropriately. And the third reason is that I believe that there is more of a need for community responsiveness from the board. I think the board, they address the community well. But I think a board, especially in these dynamic times, really needs to be a leader, needs to be in front of issues or potential issues and leading the conversation. And for those reasons, I feel that I'm a good fit to make sure those kinds of things occur.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Halverson, why are you running again for school board?
Well, as I said previously, I'd like to seek what we started, continue to, and to fruition. The buildings that we're building, and there's just a lot of challenges left ahead of us. And I've always kind of entered myself to working with kids and regardless of whether it's teacher, principal, or whatever. And the thing is, is it was interesting, I think it kind of summed it up when I was campaigning last time, if somebody asked me, he says, "Well, what political party do you belong to?" And I says, "Well, I belong to the kids' party." And really, that's what it's all about. I've dedicated all my life there and I want to continue to see these projects through. We've got a lot of heavy lifting left to do. And I think we work very well as a team and whomever's elected, I got a lot of faith and I think that's going to continue on because this is a great community and they have great support for their education, as we've seen in the bond issue and everything. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the new question will be going to you, Mrs. Williams. What do you believe are some of the most pressing issues for the school district and do you have a solution?
The one that continues to come up with me is communication. I think all of the current school board members, for me, are very approachable. But I have many parents and even educators have spoken to me personally as maybe more of a peer. And they're hesitant to speak to the superintendent or the school board, but they will tell me things. And so I've contacted the superintendent and I said, "You know, this educator approached me and these are some of her questions." As I said, communication is huge. The information doesn't seem to be getting back and forth the way everyone needs it to. I have a seventh grader and I would love if his teachers would start printing notes back on his jacket because I don't know what goes on during his day. I'm at the school all the time, I ask the questions. So I would like to continue with the two-way communication, bringing the information to the board from the community and bringing the information from the board back to, or from the community back to the board, vice versa.
Thank you. Mr. Sagsveen? What do you believe are some of the most pressing issues for the school district and what is your solution?
I think some of the pressing issues are, one, that we've got a lot of older buildings in the district. And each year that goes by, those buildings face increasing maintenance needs that continue to build as each year goes by. An additional need with respect, it's not necessarily a need, but a potential solution is the equity side of the bond that we passed recently or that the people of Bismarck passed recently. And it's going to be important to figure out or devise a way to adequately distribute those equity dollars to all of these schools that need that money. It's going to, it appears that we have a pressing need into, many years into the future, to address enrollment. And as our community expands, we will, there will be a continuing need to address how we put kids in those schools and continue to fill up all of the schools in the, that are closer to the center of the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lemke?
Thank you. I also think communication is going to be a big issue for this board. This board has done a good job of communicating in the past and I think we need to, there's an opportunity to take it to another level as well. It doesn't matter if we're talking about standards or new buildings or if we're talking about grading or anything that's happening in this community, communication is vital. And it goes from the board to staff to parents and staff to parents and parents to board. It's a big thing and it's important. Also, planning. Planning is going to be the key issue also for this board. As Matt stated, there's buildings that are in need of repair. There's going to be more students. We see reports of that in every school board meeting, the number of students coming to this school. And if we can have an idea of what's going on five years from now, 10 years from now, and make sure that we are not reacting, but we're planning for what that happens.
Thank you. Ms. Harper, same question. What do you believe are some of the most pressing issues for the school district and what is your solution?
I would like to echo what Mr. Lemke and Mr. Sagsveen said. I think some of the bigger issues is really the enrollment, the increased enrollment, but also to not forget about the students we already have and the buildings that need to be taken care of, safety issues, those sorts of things. So that is what I think is the biggest challenge.
Thank you. The next new question goes to you, Mr. Hawley. Do you think enough has been done to ensure the safety of our students? Or do you believe there are further actions that need to be taken in order to do so?
You know, safety is one of those things that oftentimes we take for granted. It's hard to, it's hard to understand everything that could possibly go wrong. Parents understand that, I know teachers understand that. And so I think oftentimes we tend to almost not want to consider that just because of, because sometimes you wouldn't move anymore because you think of anything that can go wrong. I think the school district has done a good job with safety. I am a little concerned, or always concerned, that we could do more, specifically with the safety office. You know, they, it's basically one person. And she does, she does a really wonderful job. But I really think there could be a lot more proactive training, I think exercising, and I think awareness of what, you know, what are the plans for emergency operations procedures? What, how does a school react? How does a district react? You know, I've talked to Superintendent Ousmane about this quite a bit. And I know that the district has a plan. My concern though is that that isn't necessarily gets out to the parents and the staff as well as it should.
Thank you. Mr. Halverson, do you think enough has been done to ensure the safety of students or do you believe that further actions are necessary?
Well, I'd be very reluctant to say that no further actions are being done or need to be done concerning safety. Safety is a, not a good term here, a moving target. It's always, always a concern because just when we think that we've done some good things and all of a sudden something else pops up. But I do know that in the physical structure of the buildings and what we've done already in the last few years, plus through some of our equity programs or equity funding, we're trying to improve the structures of the building. Because there are different components to that and I think that's our primary responsibility first. Then, along with that, and no less important obviously, is the training and such. And we've got a very good relationship with the community, the community policing, police force, and other community emergency services. And I also think that we do a lot of relying on what the professionals are telling us. And I think that's very important.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams, same question. Do you think enough has been done to ensure the safety of students or do you think there is more that can be done?
I think there are several areas where safety is a concern. When it comes to things like an outsider getting into the school, I think they do a pretty good job of securing our kids, knowing who's in the building, knowing who our kids are. For me, an additional safety item is traffic and crossings and speed zones. And for any of us that pick up and drop off, busing, all of those I think could be improved quite a bit. Mostly, again, with the communication, getting out there and talking to the parents and saying, "Yes, you dropped your kid off and you're in a hurry, but mine's coming through the crosswalk." And I think it's important for us as parents and community members to hold each other accountable. And I think that would go a long way towards improving everyday safety.
Thank you. Mr. Sagsveen, same question?
I would say that safety is the top of this board's, the top of this board's list. We are always working to update buildings and facilities. We do have plans in place with the city to do this. Not all, the plans aren't always fully disclosed to the public because that's an important part of how these safety plans work. I would say that there is a need to focus on safe routes to school. So I agree with Mrs. Williams that that is an area that could use some improvement. And it's not just with the school district. I think the school district needs to work with the city and the city vice versa, needs to work with the school district so we can figure out better ways to get our kids across those streets and in safe, in safe manner. Thanks.
Thank you. New question to you, Mr. Lemke. What do you believe is your role as a board member to ensure that the Bismarck Public School Administration and staff have the necessary training and materials to achieve standards for education?
I think the school board plays a big role in that. We need to be able to look out for what their needs are. The administration and the staff, we're entrusting them with our Bismarck kids and that they make sure that they're giving them the best education that is possible. We expect a lot and we want to make sure that we give the proper resources to all the staff, the administration. And it would be important to me too to swing this back to planning, to make sure that we know what we need next year, to know what we need the year after, and be able to work that plan and make sure that we can tweak it a little bit and change it. Make sure that we know what the staff needs and that they can show us what it is they need, why it's necessary, how many people benefit, what does it cost, and what do we get out of it? How many people are going to benefit from the program? So I would say it's important that the board is involved in resources and planning is important with that as well too.
Thank you. Ms. Harper, what do you believe is your role as a board member to ensure that the Bismarck Public School Administration and staff have the necessary training and materials to achieve high standards for education?
I would echo what Mr. Lemke said. However, I think there's also other opportunities that are available in regards to different partnerships. Working with state agencies such as Department of Public Instruction, Department of Health, those other agencies that may have some resources readily available for teachers and educators and making sure that they're aware of it. It may or may not fit their needs, but it is worth a shot to at least reach out to those that also have financial responsibility to be helping children in the community.
Thank you. Mr. Hawley?
I think, I kind of go on both sides with this. I agree that collaboration with other agencies, I think that that can go a long way to help us find additional resources or maybe better utilize our resources by sharing, you know, sharing resources and efforts. But I also believe that when it comes to, when it comes to making sure that our children, our schools and our staff, teachers have what they need, whether it's training or resources, I think it really starts with the board understanding what it is that they need, understanding what the, what it is that they're trying to accomplish. And that goes back to the idea of providing strategic direction. The second thing is that, you know, it might be a bit of a misunderstanding that the board doesn't, doesn't control as such the entire administration. It hires a superintendent. The board has hired a fantastic superintendent. But it's, so working with the superintendent to ensure that she knows what the resources, what resources are required, what training is required. And then the board ensuring that she understands what the board's priorities and strategic direction is and bringing that all together.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Halverson, same question?
Well, I think the accountability issue, and that's what we try and do as a board. Every time a budget is submitted with proposals, it's always there, you know, "Why do we need this and how is it?" And the number one thing is how is it going to impact the education of the students? Because that's the number one goal. And I think that one of the things that we've done, we've done a lot of strategic planning in the area, like for example, the balanced scorecard is basically, even when I was working for the system, you know, seven, eight years ago it was started. And that is the guide that we have, that we go by, and it covers everything. And I think that that's what I utilize as a board member. Anytime a request for enhancement for funds comes to me is, "How is it going to impact? How does that fit with our goal and where we need to be as a district? Where are we going to provide that world-class education and how does it impact it?" And I think we've got a method in place, it can always be improved, but I think, I think we've got a method in place to address that issue.
Thank you. New question to you, Ms. Williams. You're always welcome to answer previous questions if you'd like to add something. What do you believe the state and federal role in education should be?
I think the state and federal role, overall, I think it's a great thing to be reciprocal with other states, counties, cities, specifically within the city. And I know you said state and county. I think if a kid goes from Saksvik to Solheim, they should be able to do that fairly seamlessly. And I think that's really important when kids transition in the middle of the year. On the state and federal level, the majority of the funding comes from the state and federal agencies and government. So it's important that we follow the guidelines and also that we, again, with the reciprocity with other states. I've lived in other states and I've seen what public high school graduates from other places are capable of. And I couldn't be happier to have my son in the North Dakota public school system. I think our education is probably underrated. And even though we come out with high marks, I think we actually do better than we're given credit for.
Thank you. Mr. Sagsveen? What do you believe the state and federal role in education should be?
I think it's an easy answer. I think the federal role should be limited because I think North Dakota knows best how to educate its students and we do it well. I think the state role, it's good to give us guidelines and let the teaching, leave the teaching up to the district and leave the curriculum up to the district. Going back to the other question, our role as a member and what we need to do when, to make sure the administration has the tools to do their job. Like Mr. Halverson said, I think we need to dig deep into the requests they give us to make sure that they're looking hard at the requests. And then they're not necessarily coming to the board to negotiate these requests, but they know exactly what they want and exactly what they need so that they don't, we don't need to sit and debate numbers. So our role is to always ask questions and make sure that we make the administration think critically of the proposals that they bring to us. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Lemke? What do you believe the state and federal role in education should be?
Well, I would, I would say that the federal role should be limited too also. We're in North Dakota and we know how to teach kids and that's proven time and time again. I think that also the role of the federal portion should be too, somewhere where that we can compare North Dakota everywhere else and show the United States that North Dakota does this well and that we do it really well. I think the same thing could be said about the state at the state level too. I think that that's a great way to compare what Bismarck does to the other school districts in, in North Dakota. Bismarck is the largest school district and I think that Bismarck schools are the best in the state and it'd be a great way to compare them too. Also, the state has been very good about funding and now they cover almost 80% of our schools' funding. And I think it's important to make sure that that keeps going. So, but I would always be in favor of making sure that Bismarck decides what we're going to teach our kids and how we're going to get them to the point we want them to get.
Thank you. Ms. Harper? What do you believe the state and federal role in education should be?
I believe that their role should be learning from the states. I think that it's very important to be communicating back to both the state and the federal level, the lessons learned. And if we do believe that we are the best district and the best state for education, we need to share that and we need to let them know how we've accomplished that so other states could possibly learn from us. In regards to the funding, obviously that is a very important role. But if there are issues with the funding, again, if you're silent about it and don't share that, they are unable to learn and change what they are doing.
Thank you. We have a question submitted from our audience that's on the same track as the question we just had and I'm going to begin with Mr. Hawley. Specifically, it says, "What is your position on the Common Core standards in the state?"
I believe that, I believe in educational standards and we can't, we have to be able to measure how children do. And children need to understand what it is that they need to do. So standards are important. Standards have existed since, since education has begun. Oftentimes though, they were very subjective. You would get an A because the teacher felt that you had done a good job. North Dakota is one of the states in the mid-'70s, I think it was, they started actually developing statewide standards and allowing districts to maintain their own curriculum, lesson plans, et cetera. But, but they developed a statewide curriculum, excuse me, statewide standard. So what's happened now is that the National Council of Governors has come together several years ago and said, you know, "Maybe it's time we look at coming up with some sort of standard that crosses state lines." And North Dakota, sitting down with 65 teachers across the state, looked at the Common Core standards and said that they are as rigorous, if not more rigorous, than what we already had in place. So honestly, my time, short answer, I support what the Common Core standards are, but I also support the way North Dakota did it, which is said, "They, they meet what we need them to do." Understanding if they don't at some point, we can change.
Mr. Halverson, what is your position on the Common Core standards in our state?
Well, I think Mr. Hawley did a good job of explaining and I kind of, I tend to agree with that too. We've had standards, I've been in education, like I said, for a number of years and we've always had standards that we adhered to. And as a matter of fact, in many more classes or subject areas other than language arts and math as which they are. And by the way, I've read the standards twice. It's not good bedtime reading. I mean, it's very, it's standards, what it is. It's just there. I think the problem we're getting into is there's a mix-up with curriculum. And curriculum is important, but that should be left up to the districts and it is left up to the districts. And I think a lot of the opposition to Common Core, I think they bring up some relative concerns, some very good concerns, but they're not really with the Common Core. I think there are concerns that they need to bring to their school district, their teachers, their administrators, if they have those concerns. Because a lot of them have to do with pedagogy and methods and things like that. Thank you.
Thank you. And what do you, what's your position on the Common Core standards in the state?
My position with the Common Core standards is that they are currently being implemented and I think we should and I think we should support that in that our teachers already have a tough enough job, and to go to them and say, this is wrong, and you're having detrimental effects on our children, I think we need to thank them for their efforts. I think standards are important. And again, with the national standard, with the Board of Governors that are all in agreement, I think 48 states are now implementing Common Core standards. Again, families move, and if you leave North Dakota and go to Missouri, and your son or daughter is learning one way, and they go to a new school, and from Monday they're learning one way, and Tuesday they're learning the same thing, and just pick up right where they left off, I think that's wonderful.
Thank you. Mr. Segstein, there's a new question for you. What will you do when there's a dispute between the teaching staff and the administrator? What do, what do you believe your role should be?
I generally think that the board has a limited role in terms of disputes between teaching staffs and administrators, and our role is typically, as far as I recall, is defined by policy and procedure. So I guess that's my answer, but in response to the Common Core, I too believe in high standards, although I don't know what pedagogy is, Mr. Halverson. Whether you call them Common Core or not, I think it's important to view Common Core standard as a floor to standards. That's why I like to, I like to ask the district to work with the community and determine whether these Common Core standards from North Dakota are sufficient for the district or whether or not we need a higher standard in Bismarck. Thanks.
Thank you.
Could you repeat that question again?
Yes. What will you do when there's a dispute between a teach, the teaching staff and their administrator? What do you believe the school board's responsibility is?
I, I think that the school board's responsibility might be limited, especially at the beginning, and I think it would be important to make sure that, that they go through the processes and the policies with any dispute that's going on, and that at some point in time, if that breaks down and we're unable to come to some sort of a decision or an agreement on how that works, then, then maybe the school board gets involved. But again, I think we would need to make sure that we're not micromanaging the administration and that they're working the policies and procedures that are already in place, and at some time if that fails, that's when the board would, would need to step into that.
Thank you. Ms. Harper, what do you believe that you should do if there's a dispute between the teaching staff and the administration?
I agree as well with the processes and procedures, and knowing that there is a chain of command that should be followed. Also knowing, though, if there is a grievance policy available, that the teacher is aware of that. So again, we would be limited, but at the same time, being able to provide the tools that they would need to follow through if they do not feel satisfied in what the situation brings.
Thank you. Mr. Hawley, what would you do if there's a dispute between the teaching staff and the administration?
Well, as I stated earlier, you know, the school board hires the superintendent. The superintendent then, with, with approval of the board, you know, hires and, and maintains, you know, supervises the staff, the teachers. So the first thing I think is we let that process play out. If there comes a point where, where it, something needs to be resolved and it's just, it's not being resolved at the appropriate level, I think mediation and, and working through that process, I think is, is really where the board weighs in. Eventually though, or ultimately, we support the superintendent in, in whatever decision she or he would make, because again, they, that, that person works for us. But the bigger issue, I think, a little bit, comes back to the idea of communication, and, and having open and honest, frank communication. And, and I think, you know, if I go back to the previous question, just for, for one moment, Arissa mentioned, you know, communication and, and the issues sometimes with Common Core, and I think a lot of the problems with it is that, is that people do get confused because they don't understand, because it hasn't necessarily been communicated well. What is Common Core? What are the standards-based grading, all those kinds of things, and they've been lumped together. So I think that's really the biggest thing the board can do, whether administration or, or the community, is, is good communication.
Thank you. New question for you, Mr. Halverson. What or how would you propose to open up or support communication with our teachers and other educational professionals to help ensure positive relations?
Well, I, I think a lot of that has to do with, with the policies that are in place. I'm not, I'm a polit, you have to have policies and you have to adhere to them, but I, I think that one of the things that I see is, is that we have an open communication. I mean, I've never had, whether it's been work, when I've been at work or anything, where anybody's ever been afraid to approach me. And I think Bismarck is, is a community too where I, I think that the teachers and such, they have no fear of approaching a board member and talking to them. I've had many of them. And, and I think that artificially, sometimes you've got to be careful, if you artificially try and provide those things, that can kind of, you know, defeat the purpose too. I think a lot of it is natural, and I think in Bismarck especially, as the great community it is, I, I don't see a lot of people having problems with open communication with us, and if they do, that's, you know, it, it just shouldn't be. And, and I think that is the big thing. I'm a little hesitant of setting up artificial communication, thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams, what or how would you propose to open up or support communication with our teachers and other educational professionals?
I think relationships are very important. I have relationships with teachers and staff members of schools that we have previously attended and left, and I text them, and I've had a teacher from his former school text me and say, your son looks like he's having a good day or a bad day, and she's not his teacher anymore. I think that's wonderful. As far as our approachability goes, I think I've approached all three school members, school board members in the room, and I think we need to just be able to step up and say what's on our mind and have people respond to that in at least a manner that makes us feel like we're being heard. And I think they do a good job of that. As far as communicating things like Common Core, which as Mr. Halverson said, he's read it twice, I can't say I've accomplished that, but I've tried, probably five times. I sat through an informational meeting at my son's school, and our parent advisory council meeting turned into probably an hour and a half, and we started to get it.
Thank you. Mr. Segstein, Howard, what would you do to propose or, to propose to open up or support communication with our teachers and other educational professionals?
I guess, I'm always approachable for, to be, to receive information from teachers and education professionals, and frankly, any employee that works in the district. I'm not big on micromanaging, micromanaging, so I'm not sure whether or not the question pertains to communication between board members and teachers and administration, or just communication to board members, but I, I think it's important for a board, for the board and board members to listen to teachers and listen to stakeholders to determine whether or not there's a, a problem with communication, whether or not it's communication between administration and teachers, or administration and parents. The board can always listen and provide guidance, whether or not it's subtle or not, to, to the superintendent, and if the board members think there needs to be additional communication, we, we have the ability to do so, and we often do. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Lemke, what or how would you propose to open up and support communication with our teachers and other educational professionals?
I would, I would also make sure that, you know, you want to be open, you want to be accessible, but I think the most important thing in this communication process is to be a listener, to, to make sure that you understand what the issue is and how do we, how do we come up with solutions for it. I know right now, I think the school board does visit schools already, and I think that's a great thing, and that, that we should do that and, and continue to do that. Also participate, get involved, maybe possibly be at a, at a staff meeting, or, or maybe they don't get invited, maybe they do that already, but I think that those are, are great things to be involved in. And again, be accessible, and be a communicator, be a listener, be a relationship builder, and, and make sure that we are providing everything that they need and that we know everything that they want us to know.
Thank you. Next question, new one. What do you believe class sizes should be?
That is a very tough question for me because right now, my kindergartner has 40 in his class. At first, it may be like, oh my goodness, but there are two teachers, and they co-teach, and I absolutely love it. And so I think it really goes back to the administration. They know the teachers that they've hired, they know their capabilities, they know their teamwork, and so really, working with the teachers and the administration on what they feel is best for a class size.
Thank you.
You know, I think that there's probably, you know, a, a school answer, you know, philosophical answer, it's probably somewhere in the 20 to 25 children to, to a teacher. But, you know, what Carolie just said makes a lot of sense, you know, that, that the administration does know best. There, there, there may be unique circumstances, or circumstances where we're combining two classes for, maybe for an entire day or, or for certain subjects, where you have more children or more students in the class, but because of what is being taught or how it's being taught, you, you then, you can, you can use one teacher, or you might need four teachers. So I think allowing the administration to manage that, but that comes back again to the board. I think the most important thing that we can do for students, if we were looking at resources, is, is ensuring that we have high-quality teachers, that they're, they're well-trained, and, and that we have sufficient number of teachers. To come up with that right number, 20, 25, 15, or 30, I think is, again, from a philosophical standpoint, it probably makes sense, but I think allowing the administration to say what it is, and then working with the board to make sure that we have the right number of teachers for our students.
Thank you. Mr. Halverson, what do you believe class sizes should be?
Well, we do have a, I believe it's in policy, we have recommendations for different grade levels. For example, you're going to have a lower class sizes, and it's recommended for your primary grades, and as it goes up, you can handle a few more kids. But I think that, and we try and adhere very strongly to that. When they come in for recommending or requesting additional staff, that's one of the things we look at. But the other point we've got to look at too is when you talk about class size, it, it varies, a lot of it depends on the makeup of the class. Sometimes a class has got some children that probably have higher needs than other ones. So you can probably have a class of 15 students that would take more resources to teach than a class of 25. And I think I agree, the best person to, to determine that and to look at that would be the teacher and administrator. And we take that into consideration when there come and request more aides, more special ed staff, and as such. So I, I think that's the, basically, the, the way we look at it, so.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
I think, you know, the, the number has been addressed. For me, it's again about the relationships and how effective the group is. In a smaller group, it's really easy to know each child's individual needs, and that's obviously one of the most important things when teaching kids. You need to know whether one is more kinetic or one is more visual, and you need to be able to address those. If it's a large group of kids and the learning is very concrete, it's easy enough to get the message across. If it's something that people need to have hands-on and they're small kids, I've volunteered with third graders who have a hard time with a scissor. You need to be able to meet those needs. And if that means eight kids in a group with a couple volunteers or, you know, extra staff member, then that's what it needs to be.
Thank you. Mr. Segstein, new question for you. What role do you think the arts can play in supporting key educational priorities such as closing the achievement gap, reducing the dropout rate, and preparing more students for college eligibility and the 21st century workforce? So how would you support the arts in this way?
But that's a, that's actually two questions and one question, but with respect to the first question, I think arts, whether or not it's music or art itself, has a, a very important role in, in our system. And in the past few years, we've changed how we, how we manage the education and the arts, and I think some recent information that we've received on the board has indicated that some of the, some of the teacher development that we've provided has, has been successful to help facilitate that. How that, how the teaching of the arts will help achievement, I'm not totally sure, but I think it does have a role in our system, and I think we need, probably need to do more to make sure that arts, whether or not it's music or art itself, has a higher role in our system.
Thank you. What role do you think the arts can play in supporting key educational priorities such as closing the achievement gap, reducing the dropout rate, and preparing more students for college eligibility and the 21st century workforce?
I'm not sure how it would meet the, the last three things, I'm not real familiar with that, but I do know that, you know, you watch things on TV and you learn things, and you, and I see different information out there that shows us that the arts are great for the learning process, that it create, it makes kids and students more creative thinkers. It's lifelong learning, it, it's, it's healthy for their learning. I can tell you from my experience, I work in the arts, I work at the Heritage Center, the museum, and that's an arts place, and, and when I see the kids come into that building and their eyes are wide open and they're looking at the arts, and they're looking at the, what North Dakota used to be, who we were, who we are, and who we're going to be, I think that arts inspire kids to be the next great North Dakota and to be the next great person from, from Bismarck. And I think that we should, we should embrace that and make sure that the, the arts are part of that system.
Thank you. Mrs. Har, Ms. Harper, what role do you think the arts can play in supporting key educational priorities such as closing the achievement gap?
I think it really comes down to creativity, both on the educator's side as well as the student's side. If there is a student that may be having issues in math, is there a way that the arts can be brought in to help them solve an issue? The other thing too, I think, as you talk about the 21st century, really taking a look at, again, the creativity of the kids, are they able to be critical thinkers? Are they able to look through the process? Or are they not having that, that freedom? So I definitely would agree that it, it should be part of the system.
And thank you. Mr. Hawley, what role do you think the arts can play in supporting key educational priorities such as closing the achievement gap or reducing the dropout rate?
When I moved to Bismarck with my children, we looked around at what school we wanted to put them in, and I chose Roosevelt. Fran Rodenberg was the principal at the time, and she had introduced the concept of multiple intelligences and A-plus schools. And multiple intelligences says that people learn in different ways, and one of the ways they learn is through art and, and music. And it, it's more than just drawing pictures and, and, you know, hearing music and enjoying the finer things in life. I think, I think the arts engage children. I think that they help us learn. I think that they, it's another tool for teachers to reach children, to reach our students at, at all ages. I, I think that they're very important. Unfortunately, a lot of times, and not in the Bismarck School District, but in, in many places, the arts are the first things to go, because we think it's discretionary and they can go. Soon after that's probably sports and, and other things like that. I think though that there is a, that by engaging students through the arts, we, we inspire them and, and allow them to become creative, and I think that does make them much better students.
Thank you. An attachment to that, this is an extension of that question, but it is a new question. What do you believe the responsibility, what is the responsibility of the school district for children with special needs or a minority child, or perhaps the low-income child who can't afford the arts?
Well, and that's a good question, especially working with the at-risk student the last 11 years of my career, and with kids that come from different socioeconomic backgrounds. And, and I think the district has an obligation, because they're all core educational, they're, they're core things that, that the people need, that the kids need to succeed, this, going back to this question with the arts, that, that it's out there, that the more people that are involved in the extracurriculars, whether it be arts or the arts classroom and any extracurriculars, that they, much more academic achieve, they achieve much better academically. But I think that we do have an obligation to make sure that everybody has an equal opportunity, and we do have a system based on free and reduced, and as such, that if a kid cannot afford to participate, we, we have them, if they qualify, they don't have to either pay a reduced fee or don't pay any fees at all. So I think we do a pretty good job of making sure everybody has equal access.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams, what do you believe the responsibility of the school district is for a child of special needs, the minority child, or a low-income child?
One of the jobs I've had in my life, I have a long resume, but now I'm self-employed, so I ditched it. I worked in a special needs classroom with a 12-year-old with cerebral palsy, and she couldn't speak, and she couldn't eat, but she could sing, and she went to music every day. All of the arts and crafts we did in the class, we stood her up in a stander, and an aide actually did the craft for her, but we interacted with her the whole time. I think it's crucial that we stimulate those children because we don't know what's going on inside their minds if they can't tell us, but we need to treat them as though they're capable of anything. As far as the low-income responsibilities, I think we are in such a fortunate position that we are able to provide the music and arts to kids who maybe can't afford a saxophone or a viola, but we can loan them one or grant them one, and they can have those expanded horizons and the confidence-building exercises.
Thank you. Mr. Segstein?
I actually agree with, I actually agree with what both Mr. Halverson and Ms. Williams have said. I think it's, that's good information, but I think what the district can do is make sure that, or in addition to that, I think the district can make sure that all of these students have access to new instruments and they're not having to rely upon old or, old instruments, or maybe situations where there might not even be instruments. might not even be instruments. So I think we need to do a better job of that. And I think that is one of the focuses in our upcoming year is to make sure that all schools have access to instruments regardless of whether or not you're a new school or an old school. Thanks.
What do you believe the responsibility is for the district for a child of special needs or the minority child or a low-income child?
I think that the district is very responsible to those kids. It doesn't matter if you're a special needs kid, it doesn't matter if you're a low-income child, it doesn't matter if you're a minority. You're a Bismarck kid when you're here. And I think that's our goal, that we need to make sure that we are addressing all their needs. We have a responsibility to let them have the same access to everything that every student has access to here in Bismarck, especially for the public part of this.
Thank you. And I'll pass that question on to you. What do you believe the responsibilities of the school district for the special needs child?
I think it goes back to, again, the children and knowing that everyone is equal. They may have different ways of getting equal, and that's where the school and the administration comes in, is if they are having difficulty in something, that we can bring them up so they do feel equal and that there is those opportunities to be engaged in whatever they would choose.
Thank you. New question to you, Mr. Hawley. Would you be in favor or opposed to providing a binding arbitration clause in the school's grievance policy? And if so, what is your rationale? And what do you believe the role of the school district's education association would be?
Can you say the first part? Because I was already leaning towards the second part.
I know. There's three questions in one. Would you be in favor or opposed to providing a binding arbitration clause in the school's grievance policy? What is your rationale? And what do you believe the role of the district's education association would be?
I could see it going both ways. You know, from a, I always assume good intent perspective, I hesitate to say that having any sort of binding clause can necessarily lead to anything potentially good. Because usually when you get to the point when you're enacting that clause, things have gone, have gone probably fairly bad. On the other hand, it's a way, though, to protect those that are covered by the contract. And in that regard, I think we set up our administration as best as possible. I could see supporting that part of the agreement, though, understanding that if we get to that point, what we need to find first is resolution. And that may be the only way we find resolution is through, through both parties who have agreed at the beginning that we are going to be bound by whatever that decision is in the end. I think the role of the Bismarck Education Association, I think their role is, again, probably more, I think their role probably should be more advisory and probably an mediation role as opposed to having any sort of direct role. Because again, we're talking a contract between the school district and that, and those teachers or the staff.
Thank you. Mr. Holverson, would you be in favor or opposed to a binding arbitration clause in the school's grievance policy? And what is your rationale?
Well, I really, I would oppose a binding arbitration clause in there. And the reason being, and I've been on both sides of the fence with this, I really think that, for the most part, the Bismarck School District and the BEA has had a good working relationship. You know, there's always, and in negotiations, there's always going to be some rough areas. But I think overall, there's been a pretty good working relationship. And I don't remember, I don't think in the four years, there hasn't been, we haven't gone to impasse or anything like that. And I just feel there's a lot of trust, and I feel that they can come to us. So I'm not really in favor of that. What was the last part of that question?
What do you believe the role of the school's district's education association should be?
Oh, what they're doing right now. I think they provide a lot of support, they provide a lot of good information. I believe our superintendent works, meets with the head of BEA probably once or twice, once a week or every couple of weeks or whatever, they're in communication. And I know that, you know, they're open in communication. And they do, they are the bargaining unit for salaries and other negotiable items.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams, would you be in favor or opposed to a binding arbitration clause in the school's grievance policy? What is your rationale?
I would be opposed to it. My rationale being, I think in life, there are so few absolutes. If it's a grievance policy, there are so many steps before you get to the end of binding arbitration. I would hope you could reach resolution well before then. As far as the role of the education association, I think it's important for them to support the educators, but also encompass, you know, there are things that happen where maybe you need to say, "We support you as an educator, but you were wrong."
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Sagsveen, would you be in favor or opposed to binding arbitration clause in the school's grievance policy? What's your rationale? And what do you believe the school district's education association role should be?
I would be opposed to a binding arbitration clause. I don't think the district should limit the methods it has available to it to resolve disputes. I think if the parties, BEA or whomever, choose a binding arbitration clause, that's fine. But I don't think, I wouldn't recommend that we have a binding arbitration clause. With respect to BEA, I think their role is, as it is, it's a, BEA acts as a liaison between teachers and administration and the board, and I think it does it well. And their role is also to negotiate with administration and the board. And again, I think sometimes it can be contentious, but I think we all work our disputes out and we resolve our conflicts, and I think we have a good relationship.
Thank you. Quick question, this is a new one. And I'd allow any of you guys, too, in your final minute, to address any of the questions that you weren't allowed to address before. This is my final question, I've been warned now. Do you believe that Richhold could be converted back to a grade school?
I think that that's a possibility. And I think that's a good question and a question that's been going around this community, too. We talked about it a little bit earlier, that there is a lot of new kids coming into this school system. I think there was a number at one of the school board meetings or maybe it was in the paper, that there's 250 more kids in the system right now today than there was one year ago. And I think we're going to have to look at all the resources that we have already in place. I know we would have to displace whatever's at Richhold right now and find a new home for it, but I think we need to look at every option and what resources are here. The state's giving us a lot of money now, and for, we have to be careful how we backfill that savings that now is on to the property tax people here in Bismarck. And so looking at what resources are here and the most economical way, but making sure that we have all the needs addressed is what's going to be important for me.
Thank you. Ms. Harper?
I think it really comes down to strategic planning and weighing the options for everything, whether it is building new or going back into an old. And so not reacting, but being proactive and looking at, you know, what really is going to be best for the next five, 10, 15 years.
Thank you. Mr. Hawley?
Part of me wants to say ditto. I think, I was part of that process when Richhold was converted over to BSEP. And I was on one of the district advisory boards as we looked at school closures. I get concerned when we make what could appear as knee-jerk reactions to something that we're facing now. I think that's one of the frustrations I feel, is that we come up with great decisions when we are faced with a particular issue now. What we need to do is get ahead of that. We need to be looking down the road. At some point, we're going to have to address boundaries again. At some point, we're going to have to address, you know, the older schools in town. And instead of now just simply deciding that, well, now let's open up Richhold again, and I think not so much the old wounds that will be open, it will be, though, okay, but in five or 10 years, what are we going to close next or what are we going to do next? I think we do need to take some time, take a breath, think about where it is and where is Bismarck going? Where is the Bismarck School District going? How do we get there? And I think a lot of those answers will come from that.
Thank you. Mr. Holverson, could Richhold be converted back to a grade school?
Well, I think we've got to be careful there because as Mr. Lemke explained, what we do with BSEP and Head Start, those are our students, too. I mean, those are our students. They're just as important as the elementary kids. And I really think that, you know, it's a repurposing, and that's what happened the last time. It got to be a very contentious issue, but it was a repurposing. People forgot that we were putting children in there that are part of the Bismarck schools. So I'm a little reluctant to just look at that. I think through the process, we did, we threw everything out on the board when we had those meetings, and we had a number of them. You know, what do we do with this influx? We had everything on the board. We were, the people that we hired to guide us through the process, they threw everything out there. The public had an opportunity many times to say, "No, we don't want this. No, yeah, that looks good. Let's not do this, let's not do that." And I think that's important. I think we've had a good process in that, getting the community input. And I think that's one of the reasons they probably supported the bond issue. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have a new question, but we're at the end here, so I'll try and make it as quick as possible. What would you do as a board member to advocate for, to strengthen parental involvement in your child's schools?
As a board member, I think the reason it's important for me to be a board member is because my greatest role is as a Bismarck school parent. I'm so present at functions that kids at my son's elementary school thought I was an employee. And I think that's really important. I tell people all the time, I will be the parent standing in front of the school, greeting people. "Hi, welcome to the school. I'm a parent, I'm just like you. Please come inside, meet your students, teachers, meet the staff, and understand that when there is an issue, they already know you, they already know who your child is. And then when you have a problem, you can go and say, 'How can we address this? How can we fix this?'" I don't want disputes and punishments. I want resolution, and I want everyone to be able to work together.
Thank you. What would you do as a board member to strengthen parental involvement in your child's schools?
What I would do is advocate a parent academy for our district. And each school would have, either each school or the district would have an academy where we would bring in parents, whether or not they're selected by the PTO or they could volunteer, bring them into a school. We would talk to them, talk to the parents about what their kids are learning, give them more time with their, with the kids as educators, because I know, I know myself that we could always use more time with our, with our kids as teachers. So really make them feel like it's almost a learning environment for our parents as well, to make them feel like this is, that we want to work with them, which we do, and make them a partner in our kids' education.
Thank you.
I think that this is a great, great way to talk about parent involvement. I am fortunate to sit on a team at a parent advisory committee here in Bismarck. And one thing that we have tried to do and some others on our committee have helped with that is to look at, what do parents want to know and how do we communicate with them? And I think that that's just vital, that we do that. And I think that we could use the current parent advisory committees to get parent involvement as long as they know what they want to hear and what they want to be informed about, and as long as we know the best method to communicate that with them. I think that they will see their opportunities to be involved and then get involved.
Thank you. Thank you, candidates, for being here tonight. You all now each have one minute, or should we, one minute to provide a closing statement. Ms. Harper?
I just want to say that I am here for my kids and for all of the kids in the Bismarck area, but I'm also here to help support the educators and the teachers because without them, our kids wouldn't be who they are. Kids spend a lot more time at school than they do at home. And so making sure that all of the resources are available, not only to the educators but to our children.
Thank you. Mr. Hawley?
I get passionate about things. And three things that I'm passionate about when I think about the school board. The first is that I truly believe a board needs to be strategic. You know, we know that the district is going to grow by 4,000 students over the next several years. We know what happened this last five, four, five years when we got, when we picked up another 1,500, 2,000, what it did to us. We need to be strategic. We need to tie ourselves in a collaborative effort with the city of Bismarck. I think administrative oversight is critical. It's not, it's not micromanaging. What it is, is asking the superintendent, if these are the standards and this is how we measure, and a standard is a confluence to the norm. So if this is where, where are our children at? And if they aren't meeting those standards, then we need to make sure that resources are allocated in such a way to help make that happen. And the third is community responsiveness. And I really think that we are, we are the answer to the community. We are the face of the community. It's not the superintendent. And so it's time that we really, I think we really wear that proactively. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holverson?
Well, thank you, thank you again, League of Women Voters and the people in the audience for coming out from your busy night to watch us. I've been fortunate, I've been very privileged to be part of the board for the last four years. And it's been fun, it's been challenging, and I've loved every minute of it, even the 377 emails I got during the reboundering process, but that was talking about communication. Boy, I tell you, if we didn't have technology, I'd still be on the phone. But anyway, it's been great, it's been great, because all I see is what it does for the kids and the exciting things that were happening here. And I just want to see them through. We've got a lot of heavy lifting to do. We're a land-poor school district right now. Previous school boards had the fortitude to see down the road that this may happen, so they had acquired land. Right now, we're in a situation, if we're going to be growing, we've got to be looking. So there's a lot of challenges left, and I really would like to see the voters allow me to deal with them again. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Well, I have to say at this point, I'm not sure who I'm voting for except for myself. There are three seats available on the board, and I think right now, we have six really great candidates plus two remaining board members. I think what I bring to the table is diversity in my background and my life experience. And I think that liaison between the community and the board and the administration is so important, and it's what keeps us all open and working together.
Thank you. Mr. Sagsveen?
I'll just start my closing statement with, going back to the Richhold question. Could it be reused as elementary? Possibly. Would it be? Not without a serious conversation, public meetings, public forums, stakeholder meetings, everything that we've done in the past. If I were to be re-elected, we would continue this process. We did it with the boundary meetings, we did it with the bond, the bond issue, we did it with the master plan which we developed for the facilities. I believe that we developed a plan that was about 300 and some pages long that allowed us to focus our efforts on building maintenance, future needs, growth. And I think we're well situated to continue that into the future, and I'd like to be a part of that. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Lemke?
I, too, want to thank the League of Women Voters for having us tonight. What a great opportunity for everybody to get their points out. I really appreciate the opportunity. You know, education is the most important thing for our Bismarck kids. I'm a hard worker and I'm going to provide the best schools and the best methods of learning to ensure that they're ready for the next step that they choose. I am really excited about this possibility to serve this great community that's given me so much. I'm going to be a person that's going to work with the people of Bismarck and for the people of Bismarck to make responsible decisions and ensure that all these students that we talked about tonight have the best opportunity to shape their future. I appreciate the opportunity and the vote to become a new school board member.
Thank you. Thank you. I wish to thank the Bismarck Tribune, Dakota Media Access, and the volunteers from the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum for us here tonight. Thank you to the viewers at home and to the audience members here tonight for taking the time to learn more about the candidates and the issues here in Bismarck. This program will replay several times on Government Access Cable Channel 2 and will be available for viewing at www.freetv.org in the days leading up to the June election. Before we close this candidate forum, I want to remind you that voting in North Dakota is very simple, and you can find voting information at your county auditor's office and from the office of the North Dakota Secretary of State. Thank you very much for watching, thank you very much for being here. Good night.[1780.61][1780.61] Good night.[1753.21][1753.21][applause][1754.21][1754.21][music][1755.21]